...please. Pleasure to be here.
...to the United States of America. To the government for its stand. For our nation under God and in his will, for liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the August 3rd meeting. And thank you Commissioner Gibbons for all the assistance at the last meeting that I was in lovely Maine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
There's no one that can make me look any better than you, I'd say.
Except Lou. Okay, the minutes of July 20th, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th?
I'll move.
In a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report? In a second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Lou, I think you have a handful of items tonight to enter for introduction.
The first item I have is ordinance 4-2016. This deals with chapter 12.04, which is Public Works generally. The only change to this chapter is the violation of the penalty. And we shall read a violation of this chapter shall be deemed a misdemeanor in person upon conviction, shall be subject to the penalty provided under section C14, 1A, Article 14, Charter of the Town of Elton, which is a misdemeanor, $1,000 fine or up to 90 days imprisonment. This change was prompted by the change under a resolution the town passed that was effective March 10th that reduced the penalty into a not to exceed 90 days. It keeps the matter before the district court rather than the certain quarter pray for trial. That's why it was done. I recommend that they allow ordinance 4-213, I mean 216 to be introduced.
Do we have a motion to accept ordinance 4-2016?
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance 4-2016.
In a second, and this is for introduction, any discussion at all? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
The next ordinance, ordinance 5, 5-2016, amends the violation of penalty clause in a similar manner. Violation of 1304-260, 1304-270, and or 1304-280 shall be deemed a misdemeanor in person upon conviction, shall be subject to a penalty provided under C14, 1A, Article 14, Chapter, I mean Charter of the Town of Elton. As I explained previously, this allows the district court to command jurisdiction over this particular offense. I recommend that we accept ordinance 5, 2016 for introduction.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 5-2016? And it has presented for introduction. We got a motion and a second, any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none? All in favor? Motion carries.
Ordinance 6-216 deals with construction regulation generally and also provides for a modified penalty. The penalty being the same, a violation of this chapter shall be deemed a misdemeanor in person upon conviction, shall be subject to the penalty provided under section 14, 1A, Article 14, Charter of the Town of Elton. The same, same reasoning behind this because of the resolution, keeping that offense into the district court.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 6-2016 for introduction? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Two more to go, I hate to be monotonous, but this, the next chapter, I mean the next ordinance, 7-216, is deals with the housing standards and a violation of this chapter also provides that a shall be deemed a misdemeanor in person upon conviction, shall be subject to the penalty provided under section, uh, C14, 1A of the Article 14 Charter of the Town of Elton. I recommend that the board also accept ordinance 7-216 for introduction.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 7-2016? Present it for introduction.
So Lou?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
The last in line is a ordinance 8, 2016, deals Title 13, Chapter 13, 16, Stormwater Management. The only change to this chapter is the violation, which also is deemed a misdemeanor in person upon conviction, shall be subject to a penalty provided under section C14, 1A, Article 14, Charter of the Town of Elton. I would recommend also that the board accept ordinance 8-2016 for introduction.
Do we have a motion to accept ordinance 8-2016? Ordinance for introductions, however. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Those ordinances will be presented at the next meeting on the 17th for adoption. Next item I have is the annexation resolution 8-1, 2016. This deals with the property located at 722 East Blasby Highway. I think Mr. White Tony is here representing the petitioner, if you have any questions. He already presented the petition at the last meeting. This is the resolution that allows the, or actually triggers all the timelines to begin the advertising that the notice to the county and to the rural department planning. Uh, Jean Minner has prepared the annexation plan, which will also will be sent to the county, the county planning department, the council, and also the department of planning. I think a public hearing is scheduled for September 7th. Following the public hearing, this, this, this annexation resolution will be subject to adoption, and if it's adopted at that time, it becomes effective in 45 days. I would recommend that the board accept annexation resolution 8-1, as 216, Acorn Investment Company, II LLC, 722 East Blasby Highway, Elkton, Maryland for introduction.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution 8-1, 2016, annexation for introduction? We have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion purposes. Any discussion?
This is going for the planning commission on the 8th.
Any other, any other discussion?
Will it be going before the planning commission, before our hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
It'll be next week.
My bad.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. No more discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for introduction. That's all I have. Very good. I have one. I'd like to ask everyone to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" for Ms. Jean Brummel. So I'd love to have everyone join us. So we're gonna go, here.
I'll go, I'll go get listening.
Good, are you ready? Here we go, look, we got a cake right there.
No, oh my god.
Alright, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Jean. Happy birthday to you. Again, we do have a cake for you. We have a cake for you. And we also have a card signed by the board for you also.
Thank you.
And, and you can share that cake with.
I'm glad I didn't skip this meeting.
There you go.
I couldn't be in a better place to be on my birthday. Thank you.
There you go.
Very much.
Well, thank you. Alright, the first thing I wanted to bring up is discussion on the time of the workshop. What we've done as a board is we moved the workshop to 12:30 prior to you coming on board, Jean. We were looking at 12:30 because it seemed like it was, with Charlie being retired and Earl being on night shift and Mary Jo working in town, it was pretty flexible for me a little bit.
Absolutely.
But I wanted to see what your thoughts were because we're gonna work around your schedule. So you tell me what a good time for the workshop. I think it works better for the, for us to get answers from staff if it was during the day sometime.
I understand completely.
And if it had to be at 8:00 AM, it would be fine also. So I'm just throwing that out there. That would help.
I love the words.
I see too many eyes.
Well, I, I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you, no, I appreciate it, I, I.
Give it some thought, give it some thought.
I thought I would like to get a sleepwalk and to talk to everybody. I mean, we're talking once a month.
Once a month.
So there is a very good possibility that I tend to be here, I just, you know, so it might not be a problem at all.
Very good, but we will work around whatever schedule we have to. And if it has to be at 8:00 AM, I think we can do it at 8:00 AM. If we had to do it at 11:30 till 1 o'clock during the lunch hour, we'll do whatever we have to do.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate you.
But I think it works out well to have it during the course of the day.
I was gonna say, definitely should be.
It works out.
I understand that.
But give it some thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other item that I wanted to bring up, we've had, we've got some enclaves in the Town of Elton that we have the Town of Elton kind of surrounding some county land, and we've gone, you know, I, I feel like a broken record of time, I've always wanted to annex those enclaves. And, and here, I'm gonna give you a great reason why we may wanna look at either doing a across-the-board annexation in these, in these areas and, and kind of work on our, I hate to use the word borders, but work on ourselves here a little bit. We have an area in town, we have the, the Thompson Estates area going up Red Hill, that I get calls all the time about someone shooting a gun in the area of, I think it's in the area of the, I believe the area of the junkyard.
Mm-hmm.
And that's county land. And they have all the rights in the world to fire their guns on county property. The, the comment or the question that I have is that now that we have that one little area and we have a park, what's the name of the road I'm thinking, is it?
Ben Boulevard.
Ben Boulevard. They, they're completing that park back there now, and it's awful close to where they're firing their weapon. My concern is, of course, for the safety, I think all of our concerns are for the safety of our children playing in, in the Town of Elton. You have, I think there has to be rules, either DNR rules or rules within the county, they can't fire so many feet from a house, but maybe we could look into that and see what we can do and can't do. But I believe that we have to maybe send this up to the county and maybe the county can put some, some rules to it. John, you had a comment?
At the risk of being called Radar O'Reilly, I talked to Jason Allison about that today. There isn't any county regulation pertaining to that. I've hunted in states all over the United States, and typically what I've done is there aren't regulations about shooting firearm within, you know, certain radius of residence. Doesn't seem to be anything like that. You see some county, and from what I take from him, he doesn't believe that there's really going to be a lot of ground straw to enact something like that.
Okay.
His suggestion was, which is probably not totally helpful, but it was to go to the general assembly. It could cause them to fall back to the state. So, my, my fault, you know, my little annexation situation.
Okay, I, I know that with, in, in the hunting rules, there's X amount of feet from a school that you can't fire a gun, X amount of feet from where children are playing, and I guess to, to really pinpoint how far that is, I don't know those answers, but maybe we can try to dig some more information and see which way we have to go with this.
Can I say it's a good time for us to try to set up something, so, I mean, I know we talked about trying to set up time and get with the county commissioners and set up a meeting so we can discuss more than just one or two topics, but a few of our concerns and their concerns. It'd be a good time for us to try to get that put together.
I agree with you.
At least one meeting, we can go to their meeting or they can come to ours. I'd be more than happy to.
That'd be great, in fact, that would be probably something great to invite into our workshop.
I think so.
Or we would go to one of their workshops.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, because I recall one time during the board, I don't know whether you were around or not, we used to have a round table with the county people, and we all sat down and, you know, discussed the same thing we talked about, so that'd be a good idea.
So Lou, see if you can get us an invite, or we invite them. Thank you. One other thing I had, I have been appointed to the Will Matco Board. The Will Matco Board, thank you for all that participated in the vote. Once again, it just shows you need to show up to meetings, or you get appointed. So I have been appointed to the Will Matco Board, and I'm happy to serve, I served on it for, I think, six or seven or eight years, many years ago, and I'm happy to do it, so. Michelle, get me all the information that, that I need for that. A couple other things I wanted to mention, the Town of Elton received a safety award from the Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company, the, which is the town's comprehensive compensation company.
Yeah, we're, we're.
For the workplace safety and maintaining a loss ratio of 24.67 for five consecutive terms. So they gave us an award for being very safe in the town, and thank you to the Town of Elton employees for being awarded this beautiful safety award. Lou, if you would display this with appreciation from either this town board. I'll just set that up there for you. And that's all I have this evening. Ms. Jean, you are home.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for celebrating my birthday, I really wasn't expecting that, and I'm glad nobody asked me to hold, I was, so, thank you very much, appreciate it. Actually, the only thing I had, I was going to bring up some speed bumps that you had painted, and let me hold, they're done. So with the last couple of days, they must have gotten taken care of. So thank you to Public Works for that.
Some of them were painted, not all.
Some of them, well, there could be some more, I guess, pending, but the ones I was concerned about because they had no marking on it, and it was like whiplash, you know, if you didn't know where you were drawing. But honestly, that quickly, they, they accomplished the task, so I know they're on it, and I'm glad to see that, and thank you for that. I don't even know, I, I do not, oh, I did meet with Mrs. Minner today, so I have completed my, my tour and my meetings, and I really appreciate it, it was very enlightening with all the projects that she has accomplished, the department has accomplished, and the ones that are pending, so, thank you again.
Charles?
First of all, I'd like to say to the Elton Police Department Chief, basically, thank you for the Friday night at last night at the park. I don't know how many children there were, probably 600, I'm not know what estimates you had, but certainly the social intervention that existed was very supreme. If anyone who'd never been Elton ride through, they would have gotten a good picture that this is a friendly town, and certainly it is despite what you hear across the nation, and certainly want to compliment you and the staff that are doing a good job.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was a very successful event.
How many hot dogs do you do?
I, I cooked every one of them, 400.
They ran it early, though.
You had some DJ out there last night cut quality of 600, 600, but it's all the difference between 400 and 600.
I was cutting them in hand.
Also, Lou, is I walk on North Street near Elton Alliance, when is that gonna get repaired? It's been like that for a long time.
So I walk on, what location?
It's actually the roof.
The roof on.
It's September?
Actually, yeah, I'm lining up a company to do it, and I checked with Elton Alliance to make sure it wasn't done, from 4th as it was to 17th to 19th?
16th and 17th.
Okay. That'll be done after that.
I will see.
After September 16th.
Mary Jo, what's happening with the food shop on North Street? I know it's got some competition, so.
No, they actually, she moved on the other side of Smyrna, and she has three young children that are out of school, and she is having a hard time getting here. So it's, right now, we're waiting to hear from her to see how she's gonna move forward, and I don't, they were in Newark, so I don't really know why she moved so far away, but it's, it's, I guess, the summer traffic and everything else, it's not as easy, but there've been people there looking for her.
Okay, Earl, it's your turn.
Earl, you're on.
First, I want to commend the police department for the activity that they put on the other evening, heard some good comments from them. And then, back to public work, I'm commending them again, I'm just, I guess, so happy to see the work they're doing, especially along Main Street with the sidewalks, especially in front of the church, and guys look like they having fun working out, and I have their expressions on their face, my look out, they look like they having fun. But anyway, I just came from home this evening, and I just love to see the park being used the way it's being used right now, it's, you look out there and it looks like a whole different town, but so far with the good weather, I'm happy to see that, and other than that, I don't have anything else except for one thing. There was a concern about lighting in certain areas, and I know we talked about that before, certain areas, but I guess we have to pinpoint these areas, but I know that one of the places like going out towards Buttonwood, they, they've talked about that many times, about the main room being lit up a little bit, so, we have to talk and find out exactly what more we need to do about that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Earl. Mary Jo?
I also wanted to thank the chief of the FOP and Detective Tour for the National Night Out. I've had the opportunity to go to all the towns that do it in the past, and nope, I stated ours last night because I realized, no one does it better than Elton. I'm sorry, I'm prejudiced, but our police officers, their families are there, I, the volunteer service, the community that comes out for it is just amazing. It's a great event, and I also wanted to thank Commissioner Piner for his DJ service, I thoroughly enjoy the music. So, thank you.
I would let Mary Jo talk about this instead of me coming back to this, but I'm welcome to new owners of businesses in town, we've been to two ribbon cuttings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had two last week, well, we had three in the past two weeks, I think, so the last one was Magical Smiles on Bridge Street, very nice family and business, the wife is the dentist there, and Spork did their brand opening on Main Street, they're doing very, very well, and hopefully we'll have water tomorrow. But I do want to compliment Public Works, they, there was, there's a problem out there tonight, and they knew the businesses needed to open up tomorrow, and we have our downtown car show is scheduled for tomorrow night because it was rained out, and they are out there working and doing a great job, so I have to commend them all. I also wanted to mention, we are doing a video of "We Are Elton." On August the 9th, we want as many people as possible downtown, we have a videographer coming, and we're going in the businesses, they're all dancing, I have a couple dancers back there in the last row, I see, to the Justin Timberlake song, "I Can't Stop That Feeling," I believe that word, "Can't Stop That Feeling." Chief, I was hoping we could get some police officers, even if it's up, we'll come up here.
Yes.
We want the whole community involved, mayor, commissioners, if you could come out that day. We're scheduling from early morning till that evening, as long as we have light, and the young promotion committee's doing it, and I'm really excited that they're taking part in this, part in the town, and they want to have ownership of it, so they are going for it, and it's gonna be great. I'm really looking forward to it. So August the 9th, please come out if you can.
What's it, Tom?
We'll be out there from 8:00 AM till, till dark. The businesses are signing up on a sign-up sheet right now, so they want to make a, have a time where their people are there and get be a part of it, so, yeah.
And did you mention the car show tomorrow night?
I did, so for, it's rescheduled, it's not supposed to rain, we've had two beautiful nights, so, so for three in a row.
Very good.
So we're good.
Thank you, Mary Jo. This is the time of the evening, we open up the floor for the public, if they have anything to say, come on up, mention your name and sign in and let us know. Dave, you're on. You get to be the first and sign in and.
Yeah, I have four things to talk about. First of all, welcome Ms. Brummel, we have a chat, but I'm a local resident here, they're right behind American Home and Hardware. First one was, from, from the, one of the resolutions you, you may step back, it was the complaint about somebody firing a gun up there on Ben Boulevard. You know, I understand the concern, I support safety, as a firearms owner, I support safety. But when you put a park up there, and you're going and talking to the county, and you're considering, looking around for what other people do for regulations, you know, has anybody identified the person shooting a gun, and have they gone and tried to talk to them? Because what you're doing is, by putting the park in there, you're changing property rights of the person that's up there. You know, if he owns the junkyard, or, you know, it's a son out there shooting or whatever, and you guys are looking for regulations, you know, you're infringing on his property rights. And so I'm just bringing that up for something to, to keep in mind when you go. You know, I'm not saying don't do something for safety reasons, but I, but I am saying we need to be really mindful when we do that. I mean, you guys are talking about annexing areas and this and that, and so when we do that, you know, we just need to keep that in mind. Alright, that was number one. Number two, there is a manufacturing plant catty corner from me, makes the helicopter blade boxes, casings, and when the shift change is done, people come flying out of there, it's a straight road, goes down and it ends at Mackel, so they keep going. Would it be possible to get a speed bump put there that helps slow them down? There are, you know, by Bobby Ann's further down the street, there are children on that street, and that, that would be an issue, so if you guys could look at that and I could get an answer in writing, that'd be great.
I think it's a law enforcement issue, and law enforcement can contact their management for speed bumps, that'd be the, that'd be the procedure there, have the law enforcement get in touch with their management about it, might be able to regulate.
Come up with a resolution.
Just thinking.
They're very nice there, because I have talked to the person previously.
Okay, yeah, I can tell you, I've seen them come down from my house.
Yeah.
You got, you got some, they're drugging like bats out of the hat, bad place. So, two other issues, one is directly across from my house is a, it's about a three, maybe three and a half foot high concrete ponyball, and I have talked to the board about this before. And people come in the summertime, and they sit, you know, they get tired, and I understand they go sit and heat and all that, but you have people that come there and they drink, and then they leave their containers, so I'm left cleaning them up. So, you know, I, I really think it's time to do something about that ponyball. It's an attractor for bad elements that are around town.
I'm trying to think, excuse me, I'm trying to figure out exactly where it's at.
Across from my house.
Hardware.
Yeah.
It's their property. Right. So, so we could talk to American Home and Hardware about that, something that we can do so that it isn't, it isn't an attractor place. can do so that it isn't, it isn't an attractor place. Thanks, I appreciate that. And the last item is Catty Corner from me, next to the oil mine plant, there's a lady that lives there that has really bad dementia. She has been aggressive, she needs people to stay with her, but it is a danger. I don't know what to do, so I would like advice on what we can do, you know? I have seen her throw things at cars coming by. Matter of fact, she had a pot or a pan or something, and it was backed like this, and the car that was driving by happened to be an unmarked police, police car, and, you know, the guys with the holsters on the thigh, those guys? And so that was interesting to watch that happen, see that on my surveillance camera. But the point being, I know the family isn't that well off, and that's probably why she's still where she is, but it is, she is a danger, and other people have commented to me that she is a danger, so...
Lou, maybe we can contact Social Services or...
Community services at the county building for the, 'cause she a senior citizen?
Yes.
So they would help with the senior citizen.
Right. And, you know, the family comes by every so often, pardon, but they're not there all the time, right? They had a lady live in there with her who I think was homeless herself, and she happened to know all the drug addicts in town, and a lot of them would come and visit, and so it got to be a very busy and a very unsafe place to be, so. I think, I think something is needed, some kind of intervention or something is needed. And I would like advice, you know, if she becomes aggressive enough toward me, what do I do, what do I not do? I don't know, you know, that's not someone you can reason with.
Call 911, and we'll come out.
Okay.
We'll try and preempt that, so you don't have to do that, so you can make it a, some of Social Services or a full daycare service or something.
Okay.
We'll, we'll give it a shot and see what we...
Okay, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
See the one with the red car?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to say tonight? Come on down.
Yes.
Please tell us your name.
My name is Vivian Verhun, I'm from Delaware. From Louisiana, from Delaware. I'm from...
Doing well. And it was Vivian?
Yes.
How can we help you?
I have an issue with a house. I'm from Delaware. I did emergency move out of my house. Delaware had a monthly number of the due to an empty contract. My development where I live.
What do I look for?
In the development where I live at, and it sent the sewage, sewage rats into the drainage system up to the toilet again.
And this is in Delaware?
Yeah, invading my house. I was in the process of moving to Elton anyway, but not in that fashion. Well, when I seen the activities in my house and the odor and the damage, I just packed up and ran without having nowhere to go.
Okay.
So I came here to look at these houses, and at the time I was working for a company that never told us that they were selling out. And when he sold the company to another company, they never told us for a whole year. So during that time, I broke my forehead for surgeries and doing all of this, going through all of this. Anyway, I came down here for housing, was in the process of buying a house, but because of the job situation, they ended up selling it to somebody else. They helped me for five months, staying with that. There's a house here in, forget the name of the street, the owner's just holding it. I don't know why, he's just sitting there, and now it's deteriorating, so he's still holding it. So I went to the county and signed up for the Section 8, like, I need something now, immediately, 'cause all my household furniture is the storage. But when I signed up for the Section 8, she told me because I come from outer state, that made it non-preference, and I told her even if I'm homeless. She said yes, and she also sent me a letter saying that the Elton residents that's here has first priority, which I didn't think it made any difference, 'cause if you need housing, no matter where you come from, housing is housing. So my discrepancy is, why isn't that a person homeless and you come from outer town, that make you a non-preference, put you on a back burner until everybody else is taken care of? I'm not understanding that.
Well, I wish I could give you some direct answers in regards to housing, but, you know, our role here, that's, that's, I guess from a housing standpoint, it's, it's not our expertise as a board. But I was aware that you were coming in tonight, 'cause I think you stopped at Town Hall earlier tonight.
I've been everywhere around here.
We have, staff has compiled a list of four different phone numbers that might be able to help you attempt to get some housing. So I do have a list of four different places that you can call, but from a, from a municipality standpoint, that, this is the only help I could give you or we could give you.
That's fine.
Is give you some information, and we also have some, from a homeless side of things, we could reach out to our homeless shelters, but I don't think that you're looking at that direction.
No, 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 I don't do shelters.
Understand.
That's like the scariest, weirdest thing anybody can go through.
But we do have four numbers, I think that you will be able to get some help. We've got the Department of Social Services number here, we got the Elton Housing Authority, and we've got the Cecil County Housing Agency. Now, I think you've already reached out to the housing agency, that would have been probably the ones...
I've seen all of them, and I think I can do a better job helping people than they. I'm sorry to say, but it's like really ridiculous.
Can I say something? Has you been to the city of Newark or the city of Wilmington? They have a lot of housing available. They're in Newark, they're in the middle of building a new housing complex for, for someone like yourself. So have you been to, to go there to ask for those resources?
Wilmington, yes. Newark, no. I come from a nice background, and I'm not trying to act like I'm busy.
No, I understand that, but this is brand-new housing that's going up. I was just made aware of that two weeks ago.
Oh, you're talking about apartments?
Apartments, yeah. Or townhouses, actually.
When I was looking for like a single-family home, I have 11 grandchildren and one great-grandkid, so being a little apartment...
I, I don't, I mean, I just know there are some resources there.
I know.
Being you are a Delaware resident, that make you the priority on the list.
But I definitely moved to Elton when I was moving, but not in that fashion. You know, so...
You just answered my question, because living in Delaware, I guess your preference is to move down there around?
Yeah, something low-key now. I'm actually from Philadelphia, and I moved to Delaware to raise my kids, so that's done in the images.
Are you a employee now?
Yes, I'm a flagger.
Have you, have you, have you reached out to any of the landlords? Have you looked for any housing itself? I mean...
Yeah, yeah, I looked, it's a scary situation, but I figured that since I'm, this is the town meeting and, you know, y'all connected, everyone is connected to something.
But I will, I will say that I could probably give you the phone number, I think that we had from our landlord's meeting, we might have...
That'd be good.
Ten or 15 different landlords attended a meeting here several weeks ago, that we could get you that information and you could contact them.
Okay, I appreciate it.
So that gives you a...
That's a heads up, that's different from what I'm used to doing. I need something different now.
But we can help you with that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll give this back to Michelle, and maybe Michelle, you could put the, put some of the landlord's numbers on there. Thank you. Yeah, I think, did you guys meet?
No, she met with Jennifer.
With Jennifer?
So you can stop in tomorrow, Jennifer will have the information for you.
Please do.
The person you spoke with at the front desk.
Oh, okay.
She'll have everything for you in the morning.
Okay.
Or give her till about lunchtime.
I will.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the board for a closed meeting tonight, so I'd like to have a motion to have a closed meeting to, one, to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose, and also to consult with council to obtain a legal opinion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will not reconvene and this motion is, or this meeting is closed.